All right. Thanks, Patrick. The time is 6:34. With us this evening is Craig Schulte, Attorney Chris Hood, Ben Peters, Bill Lovis, myself, Michael Gary, Patrick Knight, Mike Roth, and Kim Van Beck. First off, we'll be, excuse me, open forum. Is anyone here for open forum this evening?
Well, somebody's got to get out.
If you can tap that little red rectangle.
Richard Olson, Hovland resident. I also sit on the HRA Board of Directors. And we have had, you know, of course, very many involvements with housing developments. And we have supported this in the past. We look forward to perhaps doing so again. I'm in no official capacity here, but I've watched, of course, all of the proceedings. And I just want to congratulate your Planning Commission for the hard work that they put in, answering all the questions and working directly with John. It sounds like solving a lot of major problems. This is just one piece of the puzzle of housing needs that we need, and we do need all of them. And I want to stress that you've also done a great job in the past of supporting well-thought-out, well-designed, appropriate to neighborhoods, highest and best use of land. And I believe that applies to the Bjorkberg project as well. I encourage you to vote for it.
Thank you.
Do I have to push a button?
No, it's on.
It's green. Okay. I'm Jan Severson, and I also wanted to just say a few words about supporting the Bjorkberg project. As I was just driving down here, I was reminded by the beauty of this area, and especially the last few days. I mean, there's no area that's more beautiful than Grand Marais on days like the last few days. And a project of this quality and as well thought through is such a thing to behold and to appreciate that this project has been brought to Grand Marais, enhances what we already have going here. And I just think it should be supported. And anything that we can do to bring aesthetic beauty to Grand Marais to enhance the already existing aesthetic beauty synergizes everything we've got going here. So I say thank you to all the work you've done because you've been very careful in reviewing this project. And particularly want to applaud the Planning Commission with its review and the hearing. And very respectfully done. And I just hope that you will give it the big yes. I'm a Grand Marais resident, and I would love to see something of this quality here in Grand Marais. Thank you.
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you. Anyone else here for open forum?
Dave Walter, 215 Sixth Avenue West, a couple houses south of Third Street. I spoke last August against this project, the Bjorkberg project, and I am still against it strongly. You know, there's a lot of kinds of housing, and we need housing here, obviously. We don't need more housing that brings more people to Grand Marais looking for second homes. And it seems like this is going to be priced way out of the price range of teachers, law enforcement, healthcare workers, county workers, the people we need housing for. And I just think this is the wrong direction. If we need housing for people that live and work in Grand Marais, we should build that housing for them. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else for open forum?
No pressure.
Sorry, I've got to catch my breath. My name is John Anderson. We've had a place at Lutzen for 40, 50 years. And I think one of the challenges we have right now is retirement plans. We don't want to keep our place on the lake. And Bjorkland is an option that I think could be quite appealing to folks that have been around here a long time, but really want to scale down and live in a much simpler situation. So I support the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, going, going, gone. Does anyone else like to speak for open forum this evening? All right. With that done with open forum, next up, approve the consent agenda. No? Okay. Just a bird calling in.
I probably, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda, as giant as it is unless that's something.
And I don't know if I need to officially make note of this at this point as well, but we are going to be removing the AAR service contract from this evening's agenda by their request. Just so bring that into that for the consent agenda, if you would please. Motion.
I would amend the motion to include the removal of the AAR contract.
Thank you.
Oh, second.
Any further questions about any of the consent agenda items or any bills, meeting minutes, anything, Craig? Anything?
No, I'm just looking through. There's a lot of items in the consent agenda. I don't know if you need to just mention them or not, but I'm fine with it.
All righty. I'll go with the roll call vote on that then. Michael?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Aye. All right. With that, consent agenda is approved. Next up is the Duval project update. Is, okay, I see online our HRA director, right?
Actually, I think that's a different Jeff, but it's possible.
Oh, I thought I saw HRA, not Jeff. Okay, no? So no one from the HRA is here, nor is Alex. Do I hear you?
Alex is here.
Okay, all right.
I'm here.
Thank you. There you are. All right. We can't see everyone who's online necessarily.
Until you talk, now we can see you.
Yes. Very good. Thanks. In the packet, there's a little bit of refresher. Why don't you give that quick little refresher, Mike, of where we were to where we are? It's all spelled out in there, but for the general public, just, this is not our first conversation with this project. It was a little over a year ago, so.
Yeah, about a year ago, the HRA and Mr. Duval approached the city talking about a piece of property adjacent to the Public Works Garage Development for what was at that time the third of three apartment buildings that were in discussion or being developed. In the packet, you can see what's meant to be a refresher, and just to get the council back up to speed on what the project consists of, where it is, the size of it, the scope of it, the intentions, what Mr. Duval wants to build, and some characteristics about it, and then also a proposed path to move forward. So we're not looking for any decisions tonight, just a reintroduction of this project. At the time, a year ago, there was an ask for the city to provide some match as a part of a large grant application, which was successful. And so now we're back again talking about the project with the successful grants attached to it and hoping to move forward on it. So I'm just going to let Mr. Duval reintroduce the project to you all now.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike, and thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I appreciate the opportunity to be here virtually with you and with good news because I think it has been a while since we connected. And, you know, as was mentioned, we were successful in getting the grant for Minnesota Housing. So we're bringing roughly $1.3 million of state money to Grand Marais, which we're very happy and proud of and grateful for the partnership of the city and the county and the HRA and everybody involved. So I just wanted to start with that. So thank you very much. I do have a slide deck. I don't know if you prefer for me to present it or if you wanted to present it on your system.
If you could share your screen and present it, that would be the best.
Sure thing. Now, let me see if I can get it going here.
While he's doing that, did everyone on the council look at page 80 in the packet? Just a refresher from last year. And I can't remember, Bill, if you were here when we had this discussion or not. Was that before you? Joined or not?
Just close.
Okay. I mean, your letter support, Mike?
Yeah.
That did outline what we'd agreed on, just so that I thought that was on.
Yeah.
So I can proceed, if you'd like me, to go ahead and go with the presentation at this point.
Sure. Great. Thank you.
Okay, sure thing. So we spoke a week or two ago with your city manager and Jeff at the HRA about outlining material for this meeting. So essentially, this agenda was our understanding of what the council was most interested in covering, the main topics. And of course, happy to answer any and all questions that you may have in addition to this. But roughly speaking, the main components were the physical form of the project, just updating, you know, what we had presented to Minnesota Housing and the city about a year ago and where we're at today. The unit mix, the types of bedrooms and sizes and things of that nature, the rental rates, the property boundary that we were looking at at the time of the application, which, again, there's really no changes here, but just wanted to clarify that. I think there might have been some questions. A timeline for the project delivery and then some immediate next steps. So those are the main items. I don't know if there were any other things you'd like to add to the agenda. And of course, I also will try to do this in a timeframe that is best for you, Mayor, and the council. So if you want to give me a rough estimate of how much time you'd like me to do this in, that might be helpful because I don't want to go into too much detail for.
No, we like details. No problem.
Okay. Well, I'll just play it by ear, I guess, then. Is there anything, anybody would like to say before I jump in?
I don't think so. I think you're ready to roll.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. So just starting with the physical form, as we said, a refresher. This is a rendering of the project as designed and what was presented about a year ago to the council. So I think folks have seen this. This was what was presented to Minnesota Housing, working with the HRA and everybody involved, which is essentially a 16-unit apartment building that has a mixture of unit types, which we'll get to next. But essentially, the main components of the project are the apartments, which you see on the right, which are in this rectangular-shaped building, and a community space, which would be a place for residents to spend time together, socialize, and do things of that nature, and also provide an opportunity for other activities to activate the area. The, there's kind of a portico that you see there with the wooden columns and a wooden wall that uses a kind of natural material. And behind that would be a covered parking. And we also have some surface parking and a connection to the bike trail for folks who want to bike in and out of town, which is roughly about a mile from the site, as I'm sure you all know. But for folks who may be listening, this is near the public service building and right next door to the radio station, tell for you, folks. So that, as I said, is what we presented. It's still where we're at. We're working on refining a few things, but there are no major changes to the form of the building or the project. So I can go to the next slide. In terms of the unit mix, we've got a variety of unit sizes and configurations, from studios to one and two or three bedrooms. We're still trying to get a bead on whether a three-bedroom unit makes sense or if we want to stick more with two bedrooms. We think there might be a, there might be a good opportunity for that. I'm also very interested to see what kind of reaction and demand there is for the other two apartment projects that were previously mentioned. We are watching those projects with interest and trying to see how ours is going to be complementary to the needs of the community with regard to what's going on with the other two. The rents that we're working with here are essentially derived from Minnesota Housing's analysis of the economics of the area. This is done by the county in terms of how rents are set. And I don't mean that the county does the work. I mean that the rates are determined county by county. So workforce housing, which was the grant that we received, was the Workforce Housing Development Program grant from Minnesota Housing, which is a state program, defines workforce housing as falling somewhere between the 80% to 120% of area median income. This table helps to clarify where that 80% mark starts. And they don't, the Minnesota Housing Finance Agency doesn't produce a data set like this for workforce housing in this exact format, but this is helpful in terms of talking about where those numbers lie. So you can see here on the left-hand column, the 20%, 30%, 40%, 50%, 60% and so on is of area median income. And then the income limits are by household size, so that's just the number of people. So moving across the top of the table from one to eight is how many folks are living in the household. And then the maximum gross rents by bedroom size are across the top from zero, which is a studio, up to six bedrooms, how much you would pay in rent. So for example, if you're in a studio bedroom in Cook County, that's zero on the top of the lower table. At 80%, the rent would be $1,334. So sorry for this somewhat detailed explanation of this table, but just wanted to be sure we're all clear on what this means and how it works. I'm happy to delve more into it. But that's how we come up with where that 80% number is. And then by extrapolation, the 120 falls. As I said, the Housing Finance Agency doesn't set those rents. They're a little bit more market dependent. So we look at what's happening in the other markets, within the other projects within the market. And that's what takes us to the next slide, which is the most current apartment project that's on the market in Grand Marais right now, which is the Gunflint View project, 55 units. And just looking at their published rents, we're seeing that a studio in that project is being advertised at, on the low end, $1,018 for a studio apartment, up to $1,125, and so on. So one bedroom is $1,455, $1,950 on the high end. So we're seeing this as the most closely comparable project. But as I mentioned earlier, we're thinking that this is a pretty significant number of units to enter the Grand Marais apartment market. And then there's also 36 more units in the pipeline that are soon to be delivered in the Heights project, which is just very nearby. So we're also watching this and don't have rental rate information yet, but assume that's going to be coming in the near future. But when you look at those two projects in combination, you know, that's a fairly substantial number. So what this makes us think is, as we begin to consider how best to deliver this project, where will we put our rents? They're going to be somewhere in that 80% to 120% as mandated by Minnesota Housing. And it's our objective as well to serve the members of the community, as mentioned before, nurses, teachers, public service workers, other folks who might be falling within those income ranges. That is the community we are intending to serve. And so what we're trying to figure out is, in light of the fact that Gunflint View's rates are fairly comparable and they are offering a certain type of apartment, how are we going to differentiate or complement and harmonize with what is going on in the broader community? So that's part of the exercise that we're in right now. And timing, I think, is crucial to that.
May I ask one quick question?
Of course.
While we're on this piece of it, so Gunflint View, it's my understanding, charges an extra fee. It's optional if you want garage space. Your plan shows garages. Would yours operate similarly? Or is that?
Yes, we have, in our pro forma model that we submitted, we had for the enclosed garage spaces, a fee that would be charged to the resident for that. It was, I would have to look, and I can get you that information, exactly how much it would be per month. But for the surface spaces, no, we wouldn't. But for enclosed, yes, we do have that currently in our model.
I just wanted to make sure, you know, if we were apples to apples, not the dollar amount, but, you know, that way. So that clarifies it. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Were there any other questions on either the previous slide or this, or just kind of what our thinking and approaches with regard to who our market is, who we're serving, and the range of rates that we would be anticipating to charge? Okay. With regard to the site itself, I think there was a clarifying question about how much area of the land, because we did, we did start the conversation looking at kind of a broader area. And there were some conversations about phasing and whether or not having a piece of the site available for a second phase or a different project was something that we did discuss. And where that landed was, we identified a portion of, and maybe it's better to just look at the map while I'm talking on this piece. A portion of the site, which was necessary for us to create the project that you see in that first slide, the rendering of the kind of rectangular and circular buildings. The circular building is what you would see here in the orange, and the rectangular building essentially is in the footprint of this gray rectangle, which, to your point, Mayor, is would be where those garage spaces are, the enclosed garage spaces. The overall area of this piece of property that would be required for us to do our project is roughly 260 feet deep from Highway 61 by 200 feet wide in terms of the frontage. That gets you to 52,000 square feet for our project. So sorry to work backwards. Maybe it would have been better if I had put this in as the first slide of this sequence. But in our proposal to Minnesota Housing, we had the matching commitment letter that was provided by the city, thank you again, which was a contribution of the land. And the city council had approved in its February 14th meeting, Valentine's Day, hadn't thought of that, Valentine's Day, that the land would be contributed to the project as part of the match requirement for $1. But there was an exercise necessary to determine what the value of that contribution actually was. Because the way that the grant program, for those not familiar with it, works is, for every financial or non-financial contribution made by the local community to the project itself, the state matches two-for-one. So the $1.3 million that we're bringing into Grand Marais from the state funds were matched with $600, by $650,000 of local contributions, of which the land was a portion of it. So in order to determine what that site was worth, Coldwell Banker North Shore conducted an appraisal, and this was done by the HRA. You all remember Jason Hale, Jeff's predecessor, coordinated on this in order to work with one of the agents there to do the appraisal. And they used that parcel, the parcel two of 52,272 feet was that area that I showed in the diagram, that 200 by 260 roughly square feet of space gets you to the 52,000. So that was what was used within the application process, how it was valued, and what the area was. So that was what we were working with. Now, with regard to the future phase, we are, of course, happy to work and try to find a comparable way to approach that future phase. I'd love to hear what the council thinks would be a direction to go there. But of course, we're open. If the project goes well for us, from our perspective, doing a second phase of essentially mirroring a building there. I think we showed a scheme like that earlier on, where it was kind of a U shape with the circle building in the middle, is an option. But my understanding was that the council wanted to reserve this because there were other ideas that the city had or the community had perhaps brought to them, which, of course, we're happy to work with and figure out how to make it harmonize with our project. So that leaves off, one thing, one final thing I'll say on this is, recently, there has been some discussion as we're continuing to dig further, you know, now that we have the grant, and we're taking additional steps at moving this project forward. We've become aware that there may be some in-ground infrastructure-related issues. And so if it makes sense to flip this from left to right, we appreciate the opportunity to at least explore that, if it makes sense, if it's more practical from an engineering point of view, and just like the council to consider not more space, not different valuations, but just to kind of mirror this, if it makes sense to go over to the other side, or maybe it doesn't, we don't know yet. But it's something I just wanted to put on the table as information is becoming available to us. Are there any questions on the land or the site piece? Happy to answer. Are there, are there any questions on the, on the land or the site piece? Happy to answer.
I just one, so the garages, is it is it garages or space? Is it above ground? Is it underground? I thought I had that, but now when I look at the drawing, I'm not really sure. What I'm looking at.
Yes, thanks, Mayor. That, they are at grade. They are not below ground.
Okay.
Yep. If there's no other questions on this, I can move forward again to our project timeline. Excuse me. The the project timeline, we're, we're looking at, again, the, what's happening with regard to the context and other projects is, is informing our approach to the timing of the project. So I think, based on our understanding of the delivery of 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 the other projects, although we would, of course, always want to get things done as quickly as possible, sometimes it doesn't always make the most sense to do it that way. So I think, to be prudent, our view is to continue our site infrastructure analysis and refining that market position that I was mentioning before with regard to how best to be complimentary to other things that are going on would be kind of the activities we're involved in right now. The, you know, finalizing the land purchase agreement for transfer to the HRA and and finalizing a development agreement by sometime in the third quarter. And the architectural and the site layout would be the main activities taking place then. In the fourth quarter, we look at having our detailed architectural and engineering designs for construction and having the final project financing completely locked in. We are working and talking with various builders about how best to do this. Those are conversations we've been having, you know, for some time now with different folks. But I think there may be some efficiencies to to working on this project in a way that you know, could involve a variety of of construction techniques. So what I mean by that is there might be, it might make sense to do a modular, some component of the project in a modular way, and another component in a more traditionally stick-built way. I mean, if you look at the two pieces, you've got the rectangular building that have the apartment units that there's a lot of logic to 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 doing that. And we understand that there are some, you know, folks doing modular construction and are in conversations with them. And we have also had discussions with folks who do things in in the traditional stick frame construction. And so we're going to continue having those conversations and see what's going to be the, you know, the best, the best way to go here. But most likely by the third or fourth quarter, I think we should have that all resolved. And if we do go with a modular approach, then we might be able to begin the fabrication and construction of those and in, you know, through the winter and then do the site, site work in the spring. So that's why if this looks a little backwards in terms of of the the site work versus the superstructure work, that's why. By the, the first quarter of twenty twenty-six, we'd be looking at commencing the off-site modular activity. Second quarter, we'd have that, you know, pretty well in hand. I mean, this is not a very large building. And we can do this reasonably quickly. Again, it gets back to more timing it in such a way that we know we're meeting the right demand at the right time within within the community. The third quarter of twenty twenty-six, we would finalize the interiors and the exterior cladding, which gets done, you know, more of an onsite and launch our marketing campaigns for pre-leasing. And I say in here, or pre-sales activities, because ninety-five percent likely, especially because according to Minnesota Housing, their whole program was pro forma around a rental financial model. So I think it's mostly ninety-five percent likely that that's going to be the way this works. However, there is potentially, you know, we've been hearing a lot that what what is really needed and where there's a strong interest and demand is more, I would say, you know, workforce housing type income levels and cost levels, but ownership opportunities. So we are exploring that, but I'm not sure if that's going to work within the parameters of Minnesota Housing's program. So we will see. But that's why that that says that, because I would be potentially amenable to that. And there are some interesting projects that are happening or are have been, are being attempted in Grand Marais, I think with a similar ethos that, you know, has a lot of, a lot of good things about it. So we'll see. Third quarter of twenty twenty-six, construction completion and certificate, certificate, excuse me, of occupancy. I mean, that's when we'd like to ideally be done before the winter sets in, have everybody in there and and have the project completed. And who knows about a second phase or another project, but that's, that's the overview of our, our thinking on the timing now. If there are any questions, happy to, happy to talk about this piece.
Questions? Craig? I do have a question now that you brought up the pre-sales versus pre-leasing. If we're looking at a sales direction, does that change the design and what you're going to be doing in general? Are you, is this like I'm buying a little condo? What, how does this change what?
Doesn't change the design, yes. I mean, it would be like buying a, yeah, it could be buying a condo. It could be some type of cooperative ownership. Of course, I'm always a little reticent to add too much complexity into what-ifs and could-be's, but we understand that there's an interest and we could be, you know, we're, we're open to it. And there's not too many ways to do it, but yeah, it could, could be a condo or it could be some type of co-op ownership potentially, but the design wouldn't change. It was, I think the compactness of this and the way that it's designed and its intention to be reproducible also in in other locations. As you may be aware, we also got a grant to do this, essentially the same project in Gaylord, which is in southwest Minnesota. So we are trying to take a systemic approach, a repeatable approach to to solving, you know, this workforce housing shortage that we're having here in Minnesota. Maybe ownership is a way because because everything associated with doing this in in a rental mode is part of the challenge, frankly. So I would say, as I said before, more than likely, we just continue executing on on what we're, you know, what we've proposed and how we've proposed it. But we also do like to explore options if they present themselves and everybody involved feels good about it.
So if I go back to your timeframes, thinking of you're still deciding if it's modular, stick build, and then potential ownership versus rental, is that an either or, by the way, or is this like a combination? Some could be rental, some, no, it's co-op, so? Or what? You tell me.
One or, one or the other.
Okay. So if I go back then to your, top of your timeframe, at what point would you lock those decisions in? Is that looking more at?
Q four, twenty twenty-five, project financing lock-in is going to be dependent on whether it's a rental or a for-sale model. And architectural design is pretty much a lock right now. Yeah, I don't see that changing much.
Okay, thank you. Anything?
Sorry, were there any other comments or?
Timeline? I don't know if you can answer this or not, but with the workforce housing grant, if it did work out to where these units were going to be a sale type thing, is there how, who's regulating the the retail value of these things? Market value or is it workforce housing? Is the grant money applied towards, you know, the price? You know, you know what I'm getting at? I guess, I guess I'm looking at, you compared this to the the view, and I know those are market rate rentals that they're getting now. I would only assume that with a workforce housing grant to build this project that you're doing, are a lot of these, are these rents being subsidized based on income? All of them based on income or just some of them?
The, technically speaking, the program is a market rate program, and there are no income restrictions or limits. The only program requirement, which is also a challenge that we're working through, is prevailing wage. You know, that's a must-do for the state. But for workforce housing, one of the benefits of the project is that the, they're not income restricted in the same way that, for example, LI-TIC projects are, or Section Eight projects are, or things of that nature. However, we are, you know, our, our project structure, our financial model and our, and the way that we will proceed with the project is to serve the needs of people who are, you know, within the eighty to one hundred and twenty percent AMI. And, you know, if it's a rental model, we will lock the rents, you know, according to the data I shared with you on the previous slide. And if it's a for-sale model, we'll also do something to ensure that the project is sold at rates that, again, achieve the same objective. And Minnesota Housing does have, you know, for-sale programs that are different, but also provide guidance and can can be a template for how we approach how to set the the price of the of the, of the units. But again, I think that's slightly
You can do that once, right? But then when that becomes sold again, or the second time, it's like, it won't be too very many times that this changes hands and it won't be workforce housing anymore.
You can covenant them, you can covenant them, and we would. If if we went with a for, a for-sale model. Again, always, like I said before, always nervous to open Pandora's box on a, on a slight chance thing. But I can assure you that we will, we will do, you know, we will structure it in a way that achieves the, the, the goals of ensuring that a person doesn't come in, buy this on the cheap, and then flip it out just to make money for themselves. We would not do that.
So not something like one project necessarily like Nordic Star, but the end result we'd want to be the same, which is, it's not, you know, exactly what Ben just said.
No, I completely agree. I mean, that's, yeah, absolutely.
Well, I'm just, I just had that question because I'm looking at what's going on with currently and talking with other people in town, with people who are looking for places to rent right now. But even though there's availability, they're kind of passing on them and still trying to find something more in their budget. And I guess budget depends on many different factors, who you're involved with. But when you're looking at a brand-new apartment for nineteen hundred and fifty dollars, then you add a garage, you know, twenty-two, twenty-three hundred for a one-bedroom. I, in my opinion, on a surface, that's not workforce housing, to me, anyway. I'm, I would, I would think that would be, would be, I guess I'm, I'm not following the the Minnesota Housing project as you know, it's hard for me, it's hard for me to figure out what work, if if we're going to build a workforce, workforce housing, but then have retail rents. I think it's a challenge for a lot of people. That's all I think. I mean, that's a one-bedroom.
No, I, I agree, and I can, I don't know if it's helpful, but
It's kind of scary, actually.
Well, the way, the way I
If I was building it, I would be
Yeah, no, no, I mean, you're, you're totally right. And the way I think of it, generally speaking, is the average, the kind of average income of the average person, and this more or less goes for Minnesota, but nationwide is, you know, roughly forty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And then what you want to do is not be spending more than half of your income on rent or your housing needs, which is kind of where it's getting to. You want to be spending about twenty-five percent. If you look back a generation ago, it was about twenty-five percent, roughly speaking. So that's the way, that that's what we're trying to get to, which is, which puts you somewhere around, you know, twelve hundred bucks, eleven hundred, twelve hundred bucks. If you're one person and that's your apartment, your one-bedroom, or if your studio, you're saving a little money, you're a little cramped. We don't know if studio will, you know, you still have to build the bathrooms and the kitchen and and all of that stuff, which, where the cost is, so.
Right.
But it's still a little more economical. But that, that's kind of the way I think of it, in the way we're thinking of it, which is we want to be somewhere in that strike zone. You know, numbers-wise.
Thank you.
Sure thing. Were there any other comments or questions on the timeline or move ahead? Oh, with regard to some next steps, these are some suggestions, of course, would be interested to hear what, what the council thinks regarding what next, next steps are a priority or the activities you'd like to see from our perspective. We're, I'm very interested to learn more about the site at this point. You know, we want to move forward. We want to understand a little more about what might be going on in the ground and how this relates to the project that you previously did with your, with your city building that's adjacent. Understood that, you know, you had some a good, a good engineering and architecture group involved there. LHB know them, would like to maybe connect and learn a little bit about the experience on delivering the adjacent project. And that would be very helpful. And then taking some steps for the development agreement, which on our side, our understanding is that the the model we want to use here is one that was previously done, wherein the city essentially does the land transaction with the Housing Redevelopment Authority, which in turn then does the the development agreement with our group. And so that's kind of our understanding of the model we'd like to use for this one. Happy to do that. And we're looking forward to understanding and reviewing any documents that you all would like to share regarding that. But those, those are our, that's our view of the, the next steps from our perspective. Happy to hear any thoughts you have on what you view as a What you view as a priority, and, and again, I just want to thank you, Mayor and Council for all of your support. Uh, throughout this project, uh, we're very excited, of course, interested to see how things continue to evolve. But committed and, uh, and, uh, again, happy to be partnering with you, uh, to bring this to Grand Marais. So thank you very much for, for the opportunity to speak here, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. The first item that comes to mind for me, of course, is the utilities conversation, which we've had before around that property and the. Joining properties on either side, well. That the lot, he talked about future expansion, then across the road, that piece of property as well.
You mean the road that's going south, our driveway?
Yeah, okay.
Would be the one, the east property, no, west.
Anyway, it was one of the two.
Yeah, that piece is a little smaller than this, than this one, right?
Alex, could I have you stop presenting?
Absolutely.
Are there other pieces you and Aig talked about for next steps? We need to create some of those next steps then, or, uh, we will be doing.
What he's listed, they're the next steps that, as we understand them.
All right, next up, Bjorkberg.
CUP for the PUD, all that stuff, yep.
Mike, do you want to? Which of you two, which of the mics?
Please. That sounds lovely, okay, so, uh, obviously we reported out last time. From our last planning and zoning meeting, but we had such a good time, we decided to do it again. We had, uh, questions that we wanted answered, um, so we asked that they come back again with. More clarity, especially around utilities and stormwater. And they did come back, uh, with that, again, with the utilities, and we've talked a lot of utilities today, but it is a very novel. Solution to the request from the council from last time, uh, as to how will these utilities move on? Or connect with any other adjacent property that may want to develop in, in the future, so there was more discussion of, of that. We also talked, uh, stormwater for a big deal as well, those are two big. Things that just. We, we just really wanted to wrap our arms around. And so in the end, we made sure that that was part of. The conditional use permit, that we definitely wanted to see what the, um, engineering looked like for it. Uh, for the stormwater specifically, um, because it just, it was a little incomplete of what we had. Um, and then with the utilities, again, we just, and I don't know if Chris has had a chance to see it since then, but just the. Way in which the utilities would work, how they might transfer back to us, what our involvement might be in the future. And that kind of thing, we wanted to have, uh, clarity around that, so really seeing the developer's agreement and. Being able to see those engineering plans come back to us again, and I suppose that would come back to planning and zoning again, and then. Come back to council again. One clarification I'll add, what we've talked about at the planning commission was, we have not asked the city attorney to review these documents. In detail yet, and. Would that be? Chris has read through them, but I, I don't need him to spend dozens of hours on it until we know it's the path we want to go down. And then we will definitely have him dig in.
Planning Commission felt very strongly that we, we did want to see it again, we wanted to, we wanted to look at, uh, at, um, and be. Kind of look at, um, as it progresses through the contract phase with the city and, 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 uh. In Bjorkberg, we wanted to have another look at how that, how that laid out.
Yeah, especially with the, the water, how the water's going to move through, and especially in the phasing. To see how is that going to happen, it wasn't a hundred percent, but again, we know that that's something that happens at a, a la- a later phase.
Yeah, you, yeah, exactly, because you, you, you know, you wouldn't, you wouldn't necessarily go to the, to that level of detail in the engineering. You know, without knowing that, you, you know, the city and everybody, all the players have an appetite for the project, which I would understand. The developers in this project deep as is.
Well, and then on that point, so then, but the commissioners were, I mean, in broadly speaking, we're, we're very supportive of the project. But wanted these elements to be tied down.
Let's see, I'm trying to think. Would anyone like to ask some questions now?
Of, of the Bjorkberg folks?
Yes.
I bet you guys do, we've had a lot of time with them, so.
Craig, did you want to ask any questions now?
Yeah, I was reading through the documents, a couple of places I found, I think it might be a typo. How many dwellings on a three-foot or a three acres parcel?
Yeah, there was a typo in the original quoting of.
Says five, says five, yeah, somewhere I saw ten, another one I saw five.
Yeah, ten is the right number.
Okay, well, my five in the documents. That I got sent away today, late today, that needs to be changed.
There was a quotation included in some application materials that was looking at an earlier version of the city code. The code that exists today that you would look online and see would show the correct numbers.
I'm looking at.
Yeah, it's going to be the memo from the first meeting.
No, I'm not looking at a memo, I'm looking at a permanent resident district purpose, R one zone. Uh, nineteen point zero four R one. Or I'm sorry, one fifty-one da- or point one twenty-three design criteria, letter G.
Yeah, that's included in the memo from the original. Materials for the planning commission.
Original speaking, when?
May.
July, May, oh, okay. All right, well, yeah. Okay. Well, you know, trying to wipe the slate and start over, that's what I'm trying to do, I don't like to go back and forth to the original stuff and back, so, you know. This is a new application, I'm correct? I would think. Yeah, okay. All right, I have one question for Chris, maybe he can explain this to me. What does, what does under unified control or ownership mean when you're talking about filling out an application for conditional use permit? For a plan approval?
Mayor and Council, so I, I don't know exactly, Mike may be able to address that better than I, is that something that's written in the code?
Yeah. I'm quoting, uh. Under the plan approval?
Page ninety in the packet.
I'll try to find it here.
Dot one twenty-five plan approval, item one. At the time of application, planning and scheduled development, the proposed facility shall be under unified control and ownership.
Oh, yeah, okay, we're, we're still quoting city code here. Yeah, we.
Yeah, under planet.
We've allowed this type of application from prospective buyers that have a signed purchase agreement. Or from people that own property, or from the current owners on behalf of people that are looking at a property, so. In this case, there's a kind of a combination of those things, ownership and signed purchase agreements that. We would recognize, uh, Peters as the person who's authorized to apply for this.
Even though he doesn't own it?
Even though he doesn't own it all outright, yeah. It's pretty common for us to do this type of consideration for prospective buyers when they have a purchase agreement. And it's often is even a condition in a purchase agreement, I don't think that's the case here, but it, that, it does happen quite often for a conditional user variance.
Yeah. Well, that's, my question is, the condition use permit is for all of block sixteen. Central addition. But we all know that there's a house on that eastern. Portion, east, southern portion that has a life estate. So that potentially. You know, in phase four of this project. It just makes it complicated to understand, for me anyway, when phase four would actually be. Completed. I'm not, you know, no one can predict that, so that's why I bring it up.
Yeah, it's a good.
That's why, that's why I question that, uh, reasoning.
Yeah, and so, uh, planning and zoning talked, uh, a little bit about the phasing, uh, as it was proposed. It's one of the things that we, we, we discussed quite a bit, including with, uh, with one of the architects and, 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 uh. And water specialists that they hired, um, yeah, you know, it's, it's not entirely clear because we do know that. The water is going to come off the property in that, in that general vicinity, and so there's going to be. A lot of work that needs to be done in the developer agreement, which is another reason why we wanted to see it at planning and zoning again. To make sure that we're very clear about how that's going to evolve as these phases. Are, are introduced.
Yeah, and I think just to jump on that, the, we know that there's going to be quite a bit that'll have to be done in that. In that zone anyway, and so they're, they're going to be doing work there.
I would like to ask a question, it's on my list, and since you brought up the, this phase four and the life estate property. In the prior readings, looking at your declarations, it's my understanding. And this is where, and if either one of you want to come up to the table, because I'd want to make sure you get picked up and you were. That's great, just. In my prior reading from before, um, I totally understand the concept of the life estate to make sure that the present owners can reside there forever. But if I was the developer, I'd certainly want to mitigate my risk on that too, as far as how long does that last, and if I'm reading that correctly. You have, um, a time limit on that that expires after ten years. And at that point, that property no longer has any requirement to be brought into this project. And you would have ownership, but then could sell it or whatever, and if I don't have that right, please correct that now.
I don't know the answer, I'm sorry. So I, I have my Howard Hetson for the record, um, helping John Peters, representing, uh, Madam Mary, Mayor, City Council. There's a lot of, yeah, I understand, there's a lot of, of, uh. Not solid things here, and I've gotten to know John over the years, uh, he's searched me out. Quite a few years ago, you know, number one, he's a good guy, he, uh, he's got this vision to do a project here in Grand Marais and do some housing. He's with the purchase of this, he owns a home, his wife is here, he's got family that's just, uh, moving up. To Cook County. He's kind of hanging out in town and getting to know a lot of people as you've, uh, kind of gotten a feel here over the last quite a few meetings. He's, he's got. Close feeling for, uh, for the Iversons, uh, they're not their neighbors and, you know, doesn't want to kick them off their property. He's got a, an option on the whole block sixteen, and, and as it shows in the documents, a vision for the whole block of development. It'll be phased, um, in, in, it doesn't sound like John can predict the future, I surely can't, you know, as far as. Is, uh, Wally and Sandy wanting to keep living in that house or, or. Even being able to, seem to be pretty healthy right now, the Sam's, uh, yesterday, but, uh. You know, I believe it's a good project, uh, there's been a lot of public support for it, some negative, but mostly, mostly positive. Going around the community, talking about the project, I mean, everybody says, yeah, let's, let's do it, we need housing, different, different variety of housing. And this is a different model, and he just, uh, got presented, uh, you know, we've got two major apartment. Projects, you know, in the works, uh, this is a little different model, it's a townhouse model. It's, uh, very attractive, I've been up on the property, it's a very nice piece of property and. I just hope, uh, uh, tonight. We can decide one way or another, whether this will go, I mean, yes, uh, there's a lot of checkpoints along the way and the, the planning and zoning. Have, have asked to see the engineering work, uh, as you might expect, there's been a lot of energy from, uh. John Peters and his, his partner and his architect into this project, in, in a lot of resources. You know, like, uh, we just had a presentation from the Duval, uh, a lot of the checkpoints on that list are. A lot of things are going to happen before the final engineering and all that, so there's not a lot of answers that are, in any developing project that are there. So, uh, you know, it's right, I think that the planning zoning, the council can see this again. Because, because developers certainly wants to see as the engineering proceeds, but what's really needed right now is, uh, you know. Is it yes or is it no, I mean, it, and I think, uh, John can live with either direction, but we need some certainty here. Even if the certainty is bringing it back to the, to the planning and zoning for, for review and comment, uh, as it goes along, but. You know, I just, uh, really encourage, uh, just get on with life here.
Okay, so I'm going to ask the question again, it's page one fifteen or one, yeah, one fifteen. Um, when it talks about what land will be transferred into the homeowners association. And it's stating that the east half, uh, will not be coming in, I'm sorry, page one sixteen. Plot will only show the west half of the block as units and common area, and the east half of the block will be shown as additional real estate to be added to the. Association, and that's, which gets back to my earlier comment that says that, um. That expires after ten years, is that still the case? Um, and once again, I totally would get it, if there is a life estate there, you need protect your interest, but that said. You also have a bunch of people potentially being interested in, um, purchasing here. And that, at one point, that was kind of stated as twenty percent. Would potentially not be part of absorbing the costs, would not be even potentially, you know, just part of the project. It can go in a lot of directions with that, including, um, build out, so that's the question I'm asking.
So, I guess, you know, I think you're asking maybe some of the economics of it.
It's part of it, but I'm also, yeah.
So, um, the project is designed such that if the Wally and Sandy lived there for. if, uh, Wally and Sandy live there for way beyond me, that's fine, it's not dependent upon that. Their residence, and we've been trying to, uh, you know, work around that with whatever, um, you know, however, the attorney put things together, as far as the ten year expiration, um, I think, I, and again, I, I, I'm not the attorney, but the ten year expiration, I'm, I'm assuming we'd have to come back if it wa, if it got to that point, we'd probably have to come back and have it approved if it wasn't part of it. That's my guess, is that what you're getting at?
No, what I'm getting at is that, well, let me back up one.
Okay.
I, I commonly say, you know, I can have whatever I personally think, but right now I'm sitting in a chair with four other people, and we represent a larger community, and I don't expect them to always be in the details, but that's what I'm supposed to be doing, and it's a big learning for me. But we get lots of letters pro and con, and every time I read them, I see assumptions. Like, if you'll remember, the very first time you came to a meeting, the first assumptions coming out of people were that these were gonna be short state rentals, and I asked you to come up to the table and explain that.
I remember that, yeah.
Because we all knew that that was not the, but people make assumptions, and I'm seeing those already in different letters. But that to me, and I've talked with, with, uh, HR people about this, is to me, that's a big thing to know that potentially the public, that twenty percent of this may not be developed as presented, because the community is looking at nineteen or twenty-one units, but there is an option here for which that may never happen, and if I'm not reading that right, please let me know. But I think that should, that's a potential in it, that, uh, the public is gonna go later, like, what happened to that or not, so I, I just want clarification.
I, I, I don't completely understand your question. Um, I can tell you that my understanding is if something is built, it has to be approved by the city, uh, that's what we're asking for.
Well, I, 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 I don't. Well, you, you have the life estate, but then you have three quarters of the lot, and, and I, I think the, the, it would be the northeast corner where there's five more townhomes, I mean, that would be, that could be built out. So, the only holdout is, uh, is the life estate, and, um, and I.
Well, I hate to interrupt you, but I gotta ask you a question. Has, what percentage of land has been purchased? Can John answer that?
Uh, half.
Do you, you own half of it? Do you own half of it, or do you own three quarters of it?
We own half of it, with an option.
Yeah, I know, I know the options there. Yeah. So how can you build phase three if you haven't bought that piece of land?
You have to buy it.
That's what I, well, that's why I asked the question.
Yeah, yeah, you have to close on it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Sorry, go ahead.
Mayor, can I help with your question?
Mm-hmm.
Yep, um, Charlie with North Shore Land Surveying, um, your question is probably maybe a better one for the project's attorney, which we don't have present, but that ten years that you talked about, a lot of times, when I've seen other projects, which we all work on the CIC declaration, but in there, it seems like anytime that I've seen them, when there's additional real estate as part of a CIC project, there's always that timeframe expiration in there, and something around that ten year time seems pretty common. Like I said, that, that's something that's probably better answered by John's attorney that prepared the CIC documents, but I feel like in the past, anytime I've ever seen additional real estate as part of a CIC project like this, there's an expiration of when that CIC or that additional real estate can be pulled into the CIC, that's what I think is that ten years. That's just an attempt to help clarify that, not knowing, having the better answer from the attorney.
Yeah, I think the attorney would give the better answer, because this is a different situation, because we do have a life estate that isn't unknown. And I wouldn't blame anyone, if I was sitting in this developer's shoes, I'd want to not be sitting on the hook for an indefinite amount of time either. And I'm trying to read both directions here, but I do think it has an element of how does the building phasing go through, and how are the, um, potential costs absorbed in that initially? So that's what it was, it was a question for me.
So, um, my, my understanding would be that, let's just say ten years happens and they're still living there. Um, and this has expired, well, then it stays as it is, you know, um, uh, it, it, it's not part of the development unless it's approved, because that's expired. And it's a single family home on, on those lots, so our transfer of ownership can happen in, in sections of that, because it's already plotted out into lots. So, if in, if in ten years from now, they're still living there, and it's that, that, then they continue to be there, and I don't buy it and don't develop it, I'd have to come back, I'm assuming, if I'm still alive, uh, in ten years to have it approved, you know, because it would, it would have expired.
Oh, wait a second, this leads to another question, did you just say then you wouldn't buy it?
Not if I, no, not if I'm not gonna, uh, plot it out, no.
Okay, so the agreement you have for the second acquisition of land is for everything above that? Or you're not, so if there's the two parallel lots, the one you own now on the west side, you have an agreement to buy the second lot to make this move forward, but you're saying that lower section isn't a part of that, it's, so there's actually three?
That, that, that is, uh, between, uh, the owner and I and how we, uh, decide to do that, whether it's, they're gonna, it's gonna be a rental, or we're gonna owner, own it, and, and they stay there. The exact, you know, detail of that, there, there's some flexibility in our purchase agreement, and how we, how we, how we negotiate that and move ahead.
But to answer, so i- if, if, if this is approved today, you're going to go ahead and pursue this purchase of this, of phase three and four?
That would, to do phase three, I would have to do that, yes, yep, and that is the plan.
And you can't, but you really can't do much of any of this without doing a lot of work on phase three anyway. You gotta put the road through, right, right, you've gotta put infrastructure, you've got all sorts of stuff that has to happen.
Yep, 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 yeah.
So, even phase one doesn't happen without the purchase of phase three.
But what it, pa, phase three, but then we're sitting there with still the fourth phase, and I apologize, because I thought you were buying that whole second lot, but now you're saying it, it's a private, obviously a private deal between you guys, but it may be only just a portion of it, which still leaves us at the same spot, which gets me back to the fact that I'm here representing the larger community, and they think this is what they're getting, but potentially, I mean, just want to clarify.
What, what?
That, that, those five units on phase four may never come to life.
That's true.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's true.
Okay, that, that's good.
The whole process was, the encouragement was to plot out the whole block, and, yes.
So, to have an idea of what, of what the, what the plan is, but yes, if, if, that, they may not ever happen.
Okay, um. Craig, did you have more questions? I wanted to take on that, because it was all related for me.
Yeah, I have. Because I have comments, more than questions, one comment I have of John is, you came before us January eighth in an open forum, city hall meeting. You were asking for a work session on your project for Third Street, Sixth and Seventh Avenue, who may want water sewer connections. And you also mentioned you're not looking at a PUD, and you're not looking at any variances. So, I guess, what was your attempt at that point in time on January eighth?
I, I, you know, we had, we had our first, uh, proposal, which was turned down. After that, we looked at just, uh, simply putting water and sewer up the middle and selling lots of. Uh, that's what that was, uh, we requested a work session, we never received that, and, uh, here we are today.
Okay.
I guess the questions I have, I'm just gonna make some comments, anybody wants, anybody wants to jump in and elaborate on these, that's fine. If you're part of the planning commission, we do have two guys on the city council that sits on the planning commission, so I'm just, I made a bunch of notes off some stuff, and, um, one of them was, obviously, you guys had an in-depth conversation on utilities. I don't know if there is a stormwater plan this time around, there was the first time. I don't know if, where that's at, if that's something you guys are still working on. Um, uh, um, the HOA agreement, we're still, that's a question. What we're gonna ultimately do at Third Street is a question, and what you have offered, as far as part of Third Street, a quarter of Third Street, I guess. Your first preliminary, um, offering of this project showed, um, vegetation degradation, um, it said one thing and then it showed another, I don't know if that's been changed. I, I see it on a map, um, where it shows vegetation, and then where it shows it's gonna be replanted. Um, the development agreement, I think we have a copy of that. I don't know if our attorney, obviously, I don't think he's gone through that, maybe he has.
We have no development agreement, that's still a future event. Future requirement.
Oh, I'm looking at a summary of the, of the condominium declaration. Okay, I have another, I have a, I have a question then, um. The other question that comes back to me is the location and build out of the so-called income-based five units. Are those going in phase three? Am I right?
Three, yes.
Phase three, okay.
And just want to confirm, that's those five specific, it's not any unit, it's that five, right, that you talked about before?
The, the project has a, has a Minnesota housing grant, and if that's utilized, then those have to be, uh, um, income qualified units for that grant.
And the.
Do they have the?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, do they have to be connected? You know, like, a block of five, or can it be dispersed throughout the development?
The design of these townhomes is, you know, it's a four and five, so, yeah, that would be, yeah.
One of the requirements, uh, Greg, with the, with that grant, similar to the last conversation we had, was that you have to, you have to settle the question of prevailing wages, right, and those have to be in the project entirety of that block, I would imagine, trying to separate one house, one from the rest of the row, right? Um, so it makes more sense to do it that way. Obviously, that's up to how the math plays out for the developer to decide if it's, do you take the money and pay the prevailing wage, or do you, or do you not, right?
Right.
And once again, like, I'm asking a lot of these questions because I hear from the public, don't expect them to always, or they heard something before, so I just asking stuff, so we, you know, this is our chance for public conversation, right, and, and clarity. Previously, you talked about working with the HRA and having an agreement with them, and that would have, um, required a, a certain amount, twenty percent of the homes affordable or attainable, whatever, it, my only question here is, are you working in an agreement with them? Now, or, or no?
There's, there's a grant, there's a grant that went away, there's a grant that went away, and, uh,
Two are gone.
Yep, so, right now, it's just a private development for the first two phases, and then if it's a third phase, Minnesota housing grant kicks in.
And the grant now, which you did clarify last, but make sure I'm saying it right, this is something now the owner must apply on their own, it must be homesteaded. Then what happens, and we just, it's sort of similar to what we just talked about with Duval on something like this, what does Minnesota housing say then on future sales? Um, and if, if some of this gets phased over time, um, who really, um, kind of watches or enforces that, is that the HOA? That they stay homestead, I mean, whose responsibility is it then to, to keep that as it's supposed to be?
We, we, all we can do is follow what Minnesota Housing Finance Agency, uh, requires, and they require that the individual buyer apply, um, they have to homestead, and then their income has to be verified that it's within, at my understanding, it's a hundred and twenty percent of AMI. I don't think there's any sort of long-term, uh, you know, they may have some sort of long-term if you get the grant. Basically, the grant, uh, uh, if you qualify, is somewhere around sixty thousand dollars a house, um, fifty-eight or six, depending upon whether it's an inside or an end one, so.
Right, which you'd mentioned before, sixty thousand, which is not a tr- tr- tremendous amount of money to buy this down. But that's the concern we've had, and we've watched that happen to other developers, um, so that gets my question again, someone buys it, and then can they flip it right away, or is, you know, how does that work? So it stays that way, or does it?
I don't think it stays that way, I, I really don't, there were other programs that we were looking at at one point that had a thing where if you, uh, it was an additional thing you could apply for, where you got additional money off, and that became like a second mortgage, and there were con, conditions on that one, if you result. But that, that is not one that we are, have applied for, it's not one we got, I should say.
I, I doubt there's any mechanism to either do that or enforce it.
I mean, and, and understand too, I mean, without getting approval of the PUD here and, and the go-ahead, you know, that's, you're, you're talking and asking questions about that level of design and, and and, and engineering and all that kind of stuff that really has not been time or resources to do. I mean, this is, you know, right to explain that, that, uh, here's what we have so far, here's what the developer's willing to do. Uh, he does have a grant, um, you know, where that kicks in, how that kicks in, and, and there's, there's, uh, you know, miles to go before you get all that planned for, obviously, but.
Yeah, they, 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 uh, they give us three years, uh, to actually do, use this grant, that's how long it's qualified for. Um, they will, they have offered that they would look at extending it, they've offered that they would look at adjusting, uh, numbers based upon what happens, um, they would like to help, you know, Grand Marais, uh, with, with this, with this grant. Um, there, I, I have to be really honest too, the prevailing wage thing is a tricky thing, I don't know the answers to all that yet. Um, and it may be, I mean, one of the things, uh, with prevailing wage, my understanding is if, if, say, for th- those five units, if you did a constructed offsite, then you don't have to have the prevailing wage for the, the building that's brought in, but it has to be for all the work that's done onsite, so there's different ways of looking at that, but I don't, I really don't know, um, there, there's some real challenges uh, uh, to do that.
You know, I'm not the first developer to say that.
Yeah. And I think in the planning and zoning, we addressed a little bit of that, and we encourage you to really look hard at that, and, and maybe, and maybe not, the intangible values of, of providing that, that's a homesteaded property, and if it means that you have to pay more to build it, and you pay more to sell it, and you, you just do that, because it's the right thing to do. That's up to you.
Mayor, can I make a couple of comments?
Sure, please.
So, you know, what, what you're looking at tonight is you have a request for a conditional use permit. And, you know, on page eighty-eight of your packet, which is the memo to the planning commission, it lays out at the top of the page, the four criteria that you're supposed to consider uh, in determining whether to approve or deny, and make findings related to that. for a conditional use permit. And this is from your city code, it's in section one fifty-two point four eight. And so each of those criteria are the basis for your ultimate decision in terms of what you're doing tonight. Now, there's no resolution before you tonight that would, you know, be a point of decision for you. Basically, you would be making, you have a resolution, and you would then, for approval or denial, so that would be something that, you know, depending on what your position is on these criteria and the findings that you wanna make related to those criteria, that would then, you would give direction to staff, and staff would come back presumably at your next city council meeting with a resolution, one way or the other. In making your decision tonight, you do have what I would consider a threshold issue that goes back to the original proposal, even though this is a new proposal now, there's still a threshold issue, and it's the utility issue and the infrastructure issue. And whether having private utilities and then having those operated and managed through an HOA is how the city council wants to see utilities done, and whether those utilities then can be connected to for subsequent development, and, and is that the way that you wanna see utilities done? And it gets to that third criteria there, which is the use will not impede the normal and orderly development, and improvement in surrounding area of use is permitted by right in the zone district. So, you know, again, this, this ties back together in that regard. And so I think that, that, that threshold issue about infrastructure, who's paying for that infrastructure? Are private utilities really the direction that the city council wants to go with something like this? All of those are very significant issues that you need, and that's not a legal question, that's a policy question for the city council. So, the questions come up about, well, has the city attorney reviewed this or that? And I did look at the document in there, which is the agreement between the developer and the city for connection to their private sewer and water collection system for subsequent developments. I have a lot of issues with that document in terms of how that would be done, I shouldn't, that was a bad way to phrase that. There would be additional changes that I would like to see to a document like that, significantly in terms of if that is the direction that you wanna go, but as Mike alluded to, he doesn't really wanna authorize the city attorney to do a bunch of work on this. If the question, if the answer to that question, the policy question from the city council is no, we do not wanna see private utilities, we wanna see public utilities to serve a development like this and put those in public right away. So, that's just, I, I guess I'm trying to get my head around this in terms of what I'm going to be doing related to this, and I'm, I need some direction from you all on those issues.
Thank you. That's certainly on our list here, and just kind of going off what people are asking and what's been brought up, but it's on my list as well.
But I think
Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, you know, Chris is kind of bringing us back to sort of the foundational things here, really. I mean, we really have these, these four findings, right, that we're supposed to be following, and it seems like, you know, number three is the one that has caught everything up, and it really was the utilities and, and water, but utilities more than anything. So I think that is maybe where we should focus the energies. I mean, there is, I, I get where you're going. Let's get as much information out as we can.
Yeah, that's what I wanna do, but you're right, these are the bigger, this is the bigger deciding one.
Yeah, so these are, because we made, you know, I know that I brought forward, you know, these are the things we talked about, but we talked about it because of these findings and because we've been here before, and we knew that number three was the one that you were most, that the council as a, as a group found was difficult last time and wasn't gonna go with it, so.
But like Commissioner Johnson said at the planning and zoning, you know, this is kind of a test case, you know, kind of suggested that John's a crash test dummy on this, and it's a big catch-22. Would John like you to come into six and seven streets and put utilities up and hook into that? Absolutely. Do the neighbors wanna pay the easement on that? Does the city wanna spend the money on that? The, the answer's been no. He's come up with a solution to put the infrastructure in himself. That wasn't acceptable, what are we gonna do to serve the other customers? He, he went to his attorney and spent a lot of money quickly to, to work out, okay, hook up to our system then. And I don't know, I think we're all weary of this whole process. I mean, we either need a yes or no, can we move ahead, or, or does John go home and and look at other options? I mean, it's a you, you can't chase this around again. I mean, it's, you've asked him to provide very low-cost housing, but also improve three city streets and put in infrastructure. What do you wanna do here? This is frustrating to me.
Yeah, well, so there is a
I haven't done a week either, my friend. It's frustrating to meet you. It's very frustrating, especially when I get emails by John that are very personal. I don't appreciate that, so. I've got some issues that I'm fighting through, and I also like to read, I would like to take the time to read all four actions that our attorney brought up. Number one, the use conforms to the land use or comprehensive plan for the city. Number two, the use is compatible with the existing neighborhood. Number three, the use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding area of use is permitted by right in the zone district. That's the one we talked about. Number four, the location and character of the proposed use is considered to be consistent with a desirable pattern of development for the area. Now, we've been through conditional use permits before, and you can always take a look at one of these can be argumentative, two of them can be argumentative, and depending on, I guess, even the, any, any given Sunday, they always say it can pass, or any given Sunday it cannot pass. But I can argue number four with anybody, there's nothing in the area that is close to this type of development, and I can also argue that we've already printed up where we wanna put developments like this, and it's always been going east of town, like we did with a couple of developments that are already east of town. So, you know, I wanna be devil's advocate here, but I, I, you know, I've been thinking long and hard about this project, and I, I do, I do, I, I don't think it's an ugly project by any stretch of the imagination. I do think that our community can use development like this. I don't think this is the perfect place for it, that's my personal opinion, I've said that once before already, just like a lot of other people have said. The, the area is tricky to develop, that's probably why it's never was developed. Brings me back to, really, when did you buy this first lot? And did you know the implications or the ability that you might have or not have in sewer-water hookups and developments? I personally know a gentleman who owns all the land below this land, John, and you've never talked to him. And he's been before the city, years ago, to get sewer-water to his property, and was denied even an application that he filled out, never even got presented to the planning commission. So, there's history that I know about this whole Third Street water sewer issue, so I guess I'm a little somewhat upset about some of the things that are said about our town because we voted this down, and the fact that, you know, I'm stupid and I don't know what I'm doing in this city council, and, you know, stuff like that, so I really do get a little annoyed, and, you know, I don't like when, you know, I think, I think we've done as a city, I take a look at what we've done here with a couple of projects, we've given two big parcels of land away for a dollar so that we can get apartments built on them, and I don't think I'm gonna lose sleep over losing my status with I triple RB or anybody else that gives money to our city. We are doing our part, and I don't know how much more we gotta do. We really are doing our part to help. And we still kind of fall flat on our plate, our face when people are looking for places to live, and rent is two thousand a month for a one person. I'm glad that Skildam is doing what he's gonna do, maybe that's something that's be more affordable for a R1-type old-time house. Those are the things that I've been thinking about the last few nights, not sleeping, and I just want, I wanna do the right thing, I wanna make the right decision, and I listen to the people who live in the neighborhood, have to deal with the construction on a three- or four-phase project. We haven't even talked about that. I mean, good lord, I'm, you know, how many trucks and semis are gonna go up that little piece of street by Sandy and Wally's house and Smith's house for four phases? How long is that gonna be drawn out? We don't know, because nobody knows. So, those are my questions, and I think I've talked enough. And I'm, I'm glad Chris said what he did, because I think it kind of sets us straight on, you know, items to be considered, and those are the four items. That's pretty much in a nutcase how it goes, and I, I really don't know the process here. I mean, what are we gonna do? Are we gonna vote on this, send it back to the commission, and then the commission sends it back to us again? You know, I, we're flip-flopping back and forth, and back and forth, and back and forth, and I just wanna make sure we're doing the right thing, the legal thing, I don't want John to be drawn out, and drawn out, and drawn out, what's gonna happen, what's not gonna happen, you know? I just think we need to, if we're getting any help guiding this ship, I think, look at those four things and see if the project has met all four of them, and that's what the decision that we should really make tonight, I think. So, that's all I got to say, anybody else?
I'll add, and thanks, Greg, for, for that. Planning and zoning, we, we, we betted this project, we support the project, we found in the findings that it was compatible, that it did conform to land use and our comprehensive plan, we found that it was compatible to the existing neighborhood. We felt like the use will not impede normal, the utility question is one that we need more work on as a, as a city staff and, and as a city council. We just had a session before this talking about that. It's not unusual, we have done this before, we've had conversations with the developer about some checks and some balances and some additional oversight that planning and zoning felt comfortable with, we've asked those questions. So, I feel like, like, I actually feel like to, to not do a development there, that impedes what we've desired, we wanted infill, we wanted more housing, and so I do think that this does, and location and character of the proposed property to be considered as consistent with that desirable pattern of infill, and so that's what I would support. So I would put a motion to, to support Bjorkberg two-point-oh conditional use request.
Thank you, Ben, I will second that.
We can't do a motion, we need a resolution, and that will have to be brought back to the city council. You could certainly do a motion to direct staff to bring back a resolution of approval, but we, we can't, you can't approve it tonight.
Right, okay.
So staying on that topic in my list of questions that I didn't get to, I'm just gonna throw these out two really quick, and then I wanna get back to the important stuff because I've heard letters already. Your design still is all two-story units, is that correct?
They're all less than the maximum height.
But they're, but they're two-story units.
The current design, they're all two-stores.
Okay, which will obviously have steps and up, elevator would be an option, right? Now, compared to your other project, you have garage space for everyone, which you did not in the past, thank you, and the only question I have to that, and I don't remember what I read, I just wanna make sure I'm clear on this, they would be not built on owner request, they would be built irregardless? Okay, thank you. Getting back to the utilities and the building phases, listening to your meeting last time, I still walked away from that listening and, and hearing that the building schedule just wasn't ready, wasn't there, didn't, no clarifications what I heard from that meeting. And my first thought is, it doesn't make, does it make any financial sense to stage utilities? It, would you not want to get your roads in utilities, no matter, before you start all your phases?
That's, I think, that's, that's an open question, you know, that was spoken to at the planning commission, it, it depends, and if you find rock, or if it's dirt, it'll depend on the contractor, if the contractor, rather than mobilizing again so that I can just, I can run all the utilities, it's most efficient to do that, it's one of those design elements that, you know, for sure, the minimum that has to happen is, is bring the utilities down Third Street to the center of the block and go up to about the center of the block, and then go west to serve that first develop, first phase. Whether, whether that, those pipes go all the way to the top of the block, that's yet to be determined, and it'll be a negotiation with the contractor at that time, and what you find, you know, soil borians indicate there's dirt along there, but, you know, it'll take a backhoe to dig down and see if that's, that's what you find, so that's not an answerable question at, right now.
Does that also mean that at some point it could be determined that it never goes beyond a certain phase, because it just isn't whatever cost-effective? That the last meeting you also commented, you know, there was this whole thing about, oh, well, it's building season, we gotta get this rolling, and even you said as you closed the meeting, well, I still have sales to do, you know, financing to get together. So, is, is potentially here these phases mean that we may not get, we already know phase four is iffy, but the first, that these first three phases also hold a lot of uncertainty?
Well, each, each phase will support its infrastructure.
If you're not gonna be putting the utilities in all at one
I mean, the big, the big cost is Third Street on the infrastructure, because we know that's rock. And then you turn the corner and go up, now you're halfway into the block, so you've got a half a block left, and if you save that for phase two, you know, those units will easily support the, the cost of that infrastructure, so, you know, then as does phase three, you go east, if you, I can see it in my head, but you, you don't have that in front of you, but it's, yeah.
Okay.
You can't, you can't force the development to happen, what John is asking for is the ability to do the development, and there's a lot of economics and conditions and who knows what to determine what exactly happens.
So we're still sitting here at a planned unit development that may or may not fully come to life.
That's life.
They're, they're, they have to be pre-sold before they're built, I mean, that's, that's
Okay.
This way, it's the world today.
No, wait. And then that gets us back to that whole public streets and private and where that all would land then. And does that make a difference in how the council feels about these being public or private, and, and getting back to Chris's question about the utilities and also the easement, which it's still, as Mike has said, and I think Chris is alluding to, that needs a lot of work to feel very confident about that even ago. And this gets me back, one more step, is I'm hearing that, and I've heard it, I think, initially indirectly, you came back in January on a work session, part of it, I believe what you're, why you're asking for that is that how much more time and money do I wanna put in to this, if, you know, is it gonna go or not go? And I feel like that's where we're sitting at tonight, because this is just still, you know, a conditional use, it doesn't mean the whole Because this is just still, um, you know, a conditional use. It doesn't mean the whole thing is a go. You're just also confirming that because it might not work anyways, right? But it still means if we say yes, you're gonna have to at some point now spend some time and money and effort to figure out these things that the utilities, the easements, the, the main conditions that we're trying to get answered. And, you know, to me then are we, I don't know if kicking the can is the right thing, but you know, there's a certain amount of risk you have to take if you're gonna be the developer and it can't.
Can I interrupt there?
Yep, go ahead.
I was gonna tell you something.
Yep.
You, you know, other properties have gotten their land for a dollar. We have over six hundred thousand dollars cash into this. We did soil borings right away. We hired engineers. We hired architects. We purchased property. We have a purchase agreement on another half. We have spent a lot of money on this project, okay? So to say that there's not a lot done and that I'm gonna have to start spending money, I find that very insulting. I also find Craig saying that I've said insulting, thanks to him, he better show me what that is because I find that very personally damaging.
Well, good, and.
Okay.
A lot of regrettable things have happened in the past. Let's get that behind us. What we have in front of us now is, is.
I didn't write, I didn't write the email, Mr. Patterson, you did. I apologize.
Okay, let's re, backtrack. And what I didn't mean was that you didn't spend any money. And those other projects are different and sit in a different situation because they are getting public financing with them. Yours may or may not, and you still have to make that decision is what I learned tonight too. Um, but I have sensed, you know, I get it, it's a risk. You decided how much you wanted to pay for the property. It's not the city's business. Um, but don't blame you. How much more do you wanna spend? But at some point, some of these things will require, but this doesn't mean this is a complete yes to everything. It just means it's the next step.
It's the next step, it's a conditional.
In trying to figure this stuff out.
It's a conditional use permit.
And long as we're clear about that, because that's not the tone I'm getting from your consultant at this moment and most of the evening. Um, just wanna be clear and I, that is the heart of it. Chris is right and it's, you know, those, the other things I ask you were just should be quick, easy yes or nos. And the fact that the only reason we're having this easement discussion about utilities is you're not going up the streets. You've asked to go in the middle of it. And in the future, what I, you know, it's very likely some of these people might want access. And we want that figured out. And do we have something or will we have something feasible to do that?
Well, that was part of the.
Right.
The conditions of the conditional use.
It is. And I, and then the public streets, which we just talked about.
We like the project. I like the project. I think the detail work is to be, is, is to come. And I'm confident that we've got our attorney, he's got an attorney, we've got administrator, we've got processes, we've done this before. Like, we're gonna get another look at it, several more as you indicated. So we like the project. We think it's a good use for the land. The details, we're comfortable are gonna come to us.
Yeah, because they're, they're not coming to us. This is complete. They, they will have to do that with the engineering and, and the agreement.
Bill?
Yeah, John, you did verbally attack the council online and that was taken down. And one of your partners did come into my workplace and telling me that I cost him six hundred thousand dollars with my boat. And the lifetime state guy did tell me that he does not trust you. And everyone that talks to me does not support the project. And I do think that the council's heavily weighted with two people on the planning and zoning out of five of us.
If we like the project, how concerned are we that it may or may not fully come to life and then what happens? You, you know, if it doesn't, my, my whole thing right away was, you know, I can change a street ordinance back and forth with minimal impact. But if we take land and do this, then you can't get it back to where it was if you get started. And I'm initially thinking that this is a, a full project with this many townhomes within which growhouses, I'm sorry. They look great. All that looks fine. But is the council comfortable that this may never, like, if it gets started and then what happens to the other property? Then can it just be then sold off and then we end up seeing just like the lots divided or whatever? I mean, is that a question to be asking?
It's not our land. I don't know. I like, I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't have an affinity toward it, you know, like this is.
It's private land.
Doesn't, but it's because it didn't work out and it was a bad financial decision for the developer. But we don't, we don't have that much skin in the game. Like, we're just looking at the use and does it work and.
Yeah.
That's it.
We, we'll. I think we do have some skin in game, not financially, but we have expectations that what we're, what's going to be developed on this land. And we're saying yes to all of those being developed and developed in a certain way. And then if it doesn't, it kind of.
Yeah, but if it doesn't, that's all part of the agreement. And so they'll have to come back to us if that's not happening.
And?
And, well, I mean, I can't predict the future and we don't know.
Okay. All right, that's fine. I'm just thinking out loud. Well, those are the, the extent of my questions. And I think it's the same things you guys talked about last time. Is the utility piece is an easement piece of it is far from worked out to make me very comfortable. And um, then there's still the question on the rest of the utilities.
The rest of the utilities in your meeting?
Well, I'm sorry, I didn't say that. Well, what, what Chris had mentioned.
About what our overall policy is? I don't know where, yeah.
But we have to have that.
That's to be determined.
And we are having that conversation, yeah.
So I, did I not have a motion? Do I, do we?
Well, your whole emotion was unrecognized. I think you can make it very similarly the way Chris phrased it.
Which was?
To direct staff to prepare a resolution.
Okay. That's what I'd like to do.
And I would also like to say that.
That was your second?
That was my second. It was a pretty good second. It's been a long day.
It has been. Uh, any further comments or questions? All right, uh. Will you fully state that again, Ben, just before I do roll call?
Like, yeah, re, I'd like the city staff to prepare a resolution in support of the Bjorkberg conditional use permission.
Okay, thank you. I am going to do a um, roll call vote. Craig?
Oh, no.
Okay, Ben?
Yes.
Bill?
No.
Michael?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, thank you. All we got work to do.
Yep.
And the liquor store is closed.
We're not done with this meeting yet, young man.
What, you've got keys?
I do, but that's not what I was up.
Don't, don't pack up. We have more stuff to talk about.
Yeah, let's just give them a minute or two to clear the room.
Yeah. Okay, council and staff reports, um.
Okay.
What? Yeah, sorry about that.
No, it's all right.
You can zip right through it.
And while your head gets resituated, I'm going to go over mine first this time. Um, there was a request by the Lakeshire Coastal Program for a letter of support for their program. It had a deadline of last Friday. So assuming everyone would be in favor of that, we did answer their online and joined that. If there's any issue with that, let me know. My, at our North Shore Management Board, um, meeting, we're having a lot of conversations, which I did mention about structure and, and just the whole board. But there is a concern with not getting quorum at these meetings. So just like you are my official replacement for the E D A, which we voted on the other year, you may remember.
I do remember.
Which I forgot when, when I didn't get to go one time. They want that same thing for the North Shore Management Board and it has to be one of us. We can't make Shane Steele or someone else. It has to be one of the council members.
Shane's gonna be really happy to hear that, by the way.
So I would like to ask if someone would be willing to be the alternate representative of the North Shore Management Board.
I'm happy to do it.
Anyone else just chomping at the bit or we?
I'll let Ben do it.
This is Ben's? All right, way to go, Ben. Thank you. Then at the end of June, both Mike and I will be at the League Minnesota Cities Conference. I'm gonna assume none of the rest of you signed up at this point.
I think maybe Bill did, actually.
Bill did? Perfect. Um, thank you a lot. Um, so can we change our meeting date for that Wednesday? That, that's the beginning day of the conference. I will not be there. Mike will not be here for our meeting on that day.
Our suggestion was Tuesday, the twenty fourth.
Tuesday, drink to, oh, yeah. That's fine for me, anyway.
Ben?
The twenty.
Fourth. It's a Tuesday.
Yeah, that's fine.
Craig?
What's the day, the date?
Tuesday, the twenty fourth.
So this is the end of June?
Oh, yeah, well, I'm living day by day down here, so. Am I, yeah, just, any day is fine. I'll try to.
Okay. Let me take it that works for you because you're gonna go to the conference. Okay. So we're set then for June twenty fourth. Um. I. Okay, that's it. I'll look your way.
Oh, okay. Yes, we had a library board meeting where we talked about, we have two principally two funds that we have that we're looking at combining. And we're trying to figure out what the legal issues are around being able to do that or not. And that would help us decide about paying for, possibly paying for uh, another emergency exit for the library. We have the funds then maybe. That was part of the discussion too. We may or may not wanna put money into another door. We've done a lot of security upgrades, but this was one more thing that the staff was asking for. Um, so considering it and it's easy to consider something like that if you have the money to pay for it. So that would be my report.
Anything else?
Uh, no.
Well.
Well, mine is very easy but confusing.
Okay.
Airhead Animal Rescue, they seemed very happy with the agreement. And they wondered when they would be finalized and I said I'd look into it. I did. And they spent some time talking about fundraising and festivals and some excitement about how to deck out the new interior and so forth. And then animal status of adoption updates and stuff. And then the tree board is just coming right. Yeah, it'd be interesting to hear what, what side it is.
I don't think it went sideways. It was a holiday weekend and we just had a few extra comments come in late, so I don't think there's any sideways.
Not for me. Planning and zoning, you heard it. Um, you have human resources. Um, yeah, I don't think there's a lot to report on that yet.
No, where they're going.
Yeah, we just talked about some logistics and how planning for this year's review process, uh, streamlining a few things. Making an equity adjustment to a s, a staff, city staff that's, uh, you're gonna see that next week, I think?
No, we have to meet. Um, and then, and then job reviews.
Oh, we're meeting.
Job description review. Yes, we need to have a meeting. But job description reviews.
Okay.
Two is, is what the consultant's working on with Mike at this point.
So is that.
Updating.
So bringing somebody up and that must, oh, that's a, a manager, so that's.
Yeah. Okay.
And then North House has a boats to tools auction happening right now. Lots of cool stuff online. So you can go to their website and they got a silent auction. You can bid on items.
Craig?
Um. I really don't have anything other than, um, in the consent agenda, we did approve the park bathhouse rec center concept plan proposal. And you had that in your packet. That's something that, um, as far as the rec park is pursuing right now. To try to secure some legacy funding for that project. So that's all I have.
Thank you. What are the liquor store hours now for the summer and have they increased now that we have a new store?
They're open till eight, so.
What about Fridays and Saturdays and long, you know, it's summertime?
They're open till eight right now.
Are we gonna add to staff to get those hours improved?
I'm not sure. It's a staffing issue. I think it's a, how busy are we issue?
We'd be busy past eight o'clock, especially on a weekend.
I'll have Chris come talk to you.
Thank you. Um, I didn't have anything else.
Some of you will be joining us tomorrow at our grand opening ribbon cutting ceremony here for this building. For those of you who are not, we'll miss you greatly. We'll think about you and we will say thank you for all the hard work you put into the project.
Well, thank you very much. Have a good time. I will not be there.
What?
I have to be out of town. So that was, I didn't know about this and I have to be gone.
Commit it otherwise.
Yes, there's something I can't change or I would. So have a really fun time at the open house because it's really cool. And I want to say publicly that I've had multiple comments about how nice the design for the invitation was that Alyssa put together. People have noticed. I think that was very nice. So.
There you go.
There you go.
Are we adjourned?
I don't know, Patrick, are we adjourned?